In this particular case, because of the participation of the local folks, we wanted to make sure that they had a chance to do theirs without waiting until the end of the foundation meeting. So that's why the organization is at its end. So with that welcome, let me first ask if there are any declarations of conflicts for today's meeting. Hearing none, I believe Andrew has something short he would like to explain.
Yeah, so there is one other thing. Some of you will be aware, we have a reallocation of some responsibilities that will be starting in January. For the most part, that doesn't actually have any effect on people's jobs, but there are two exceptions to that. And that is Sally and Rinalia, who are here with us today and who will be leading a number of the discussions rather than me. So I just wanted to make clear why that was happening. There's nothing weird about it. That's in fact our plan for how things are going to go forward in the future. And I wanted to make sure that everybody understood why that's happening. So you know, this is part of the reallocation of responsibilities that is happening at the beginning of the year. That is not really changing the way the internet society works, but this is the exception to that. Thanks.
Thank you, Andrew. As you will note from the agenda, our next scheduled speaker would be Lars Eggerd. Unfortunately Lars is down with COVID. So we'll receive a written report from him in the future. That means our next speaker is Maria Kuliven as Chair of the Internet Architecture Board. Maria.
Yes, good morning, everybody. And greetings from last I just was chatting with, so he's well up. I did send some slides. Yes. So I'm send a few more slides as I'm here, so you have a chance to ask questions and we have maybe a bit of discussion if you want. And also if you have any general questions about the IETF or the IHT, I can try to under them as well, even so Lars is not here. Okay, I can can keep talking. No, that's okay. Yeah, so that's a report from the Internet Architecture Board. That means I'm focusing on topics that the Internet Architecture Board is working on and we can go to the next slide, I think. Just for people who are maybe not completely aware what the Internet Architecture Board is doing, which is like often the case. The Internet Architecture Board is one of three leadership groups in the IETF. The other one is the IHT that is led by Lars and then is also the LSC Board, which was established only a few years ago when we organized. And the responsibility for the IB is there's a couple of like formal things we're doing like selecting and confirming people in certain positions. We are responsible for the oversight of the standards process and the management. So this is like including appeals and there was also some responsibilities for the RFC series, which we just reorganized, so should update the slide. Not true anymore, but we're the touch point for Ayana at least. We are also the contact point for ISOC. And then there's a bunch of technical things that we're trying to do, which we call architectural oversight, which basically means that we have a group of experts who try to figure out in the IETF if there are any topics that need more discussion, that need more attention that are not well addressed yet. Okay, next slide. This is the current IB. We have 12 members that are selected by the NOMCOM, by the community. And then we also have the IETF Chair Lars and the IRTF Chair Colin as members of the IB. And I'm as the Chair of the IB, I'm selected by the members of the IB. Next slide. And we submit a report in a written form before every IETF meeting. I think you received the report already and you can download it in the proceedings of the IETF meeting. And this is like all the official stuff that we're doing, all statements, all the appointments, everything, if you want like the full list. And just very quickly, maybe some things that might be of interest for you. We just published two reports from two workshops that we held last year. So those are ready and if you want to read them. And there's one document that's coming up about an architecture consideration, which will be published very soon. Next. Yeah, more interesting is maybe this one, this is the very recent research workshop that was held a few weeks ago. The focus was on management in encrypted network or management of encrypted traffic. And this is an ongoing discussion. And with this workshop, we were trying to not talk too much about like, why do you break our systems when encrypting your traffic? It's more about like, what can we actually do? Like, how can we help you? How can we change network management and these kind of mechanisms to make them work within crypto traffic and make them also work in a more secure internet? There were no concrete like action items that came out of this workshop, but we had a really good discussion, a better understanding among the participants and also an understanding that this is not an easy task and there will not be like one solution that fits all. We have to look at every problem separately and find a good solution for it. So recordings are online, papers are online, slides are online and the report is hopefully coming very soon. Next one. There is an upcoming workshop very soon in the first week of December. Does it not say this on the slide? Yeah, it does. But at the top. So we received a bunch of submissions, like more than thirty submissions. So there's a lot of interest in this topic about environmental impact. And we mainly trying to figure out what is the impact of the internet? Like, how can we measure it? What does it mean? And is there something we need to do? So let's see what will happen there. Next slide. As we're talking about important technical topics, I would just want to outline, we have these weekly calls. They are open for observers, observers, if you're interested in it. But the interesting part here is that once a month, we actually do a call that is focusing on technical topics only. And this just gives you a quick list of like technical topics that we had over the last couple of months. So there was something on interdomain routing security. This is not a new topic, but it's an open problem. And we're trying to figure out if there's maybe a way to like address this problem again. Or like now, maybe there there are different things that we can do now than like over the last couple of years. And we had a discussion about limited domain. This is something that comes up very often in the IETF where people say, we want to operate this protocol in a limited domain. So it doesn't have to be, doesn't have to have the same properties. When we say it's actually better to develop a protocol that is can be used in a widespread scenario and is very safe and has all the properties that we also would expect from from an internet protocol.
Maria, you have a question from Barry.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Hi, this is Barry Lee, but are these technical topics announced or could they be announced on the IETF announce list?
They are currently not announced. We decided that we don't want to spend the list by announcing all our calls, but maybe only announcing the technical ones might be a good idea. Okay, I will keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Yeah, limited domains. So the question was like, is there actually something special? That's an ongoing discussion still. We talked a lot about data privacy. This is a topic that comes up very often for different protocols. And there's a new document out there talking about the privacy partitioning principle. Centralization is a topic that we've been talking about a lot over the last couple of years. And we have a document which is not written by the IB, but like supported by the IB, written by a community member that we try to move forward. And then we had this invited talk about partial internet connectivity based on a paper from John Heidemann, which was also very interesting discussion about what what is the internet actually? What does it mean to be connected? Which kind of properties do you have to have to say you're connected to the internet? Okay. Next slide. Technical work, we have a couple of technical programs. Actually, we only have one at the moment, we closed the other one. But on this slide, I actually would put your attention on the lower part. We also have these what we call administrative support groups. So that's really just to support the IB in their responsibilities, where we need additional members and we have two new groups. So we have a group that existed basically forever for coordination between the IETF and the IEEE, just like now it has a formal home, it's more visible. And the interesting part for you might be that we also now created a formal group for the coordination between IB and ISO policy coordination. So that's that's meant means that we do like calls from time to time, like once per meeting cycle or once per month or whatever. We have to figure out how we handle that. So we have like a few more people focusing on discussions and touch points between IB and ISO.
So just to confirm a little bit about that, is that something that's being coordinated through the people who are the observers at the Internet Architecture Board from ISO?
Yes, so the members of this group are the liaison that we already have in the IB. Some members from the IB, some members from the IHT. And then what we do depending on the topic, we also invite other people from ISOC to join. For example, to give us more information about last time we were talking about the IGF or other meetings where ISOC has like more expertise than than we have.
Thank you.
Next slide. Talking about policy, we recently, and you find this in the report, I just wanted to say quickly, recently published a bunch of statements where we comment on calls for input from different organizations. And we do this kind of on a little bit random basis. It's like if an IB member comes up and says, this is important, we should do something, we might do it. But this is also one of the things where this ISOC coordination group might be very helpful to like detect those things. But also like if both groups, the IB and ISOC reply to a response, that we at least know about it and maybe have a chance to talk about it and are to some extent aligned about it. It doesn't mean that we have to say the same thing, but at least we should be aware what the other group is saying. Next. Yeah, and talking about policy, this may be also interesting for you in the recordings of the discussions. We have this IB open meeting, which we do for like maybe two years now. It's just another way to engage with the community, get feedback, have a discussion. But what we also did for the last two meetings were inviting speakers. And these topics were like to stomach and policy related. And because we thought that's actually good forum for us. So this meeting, we had two talks about censorship in Iran, really good talks. Like if you're interested in it, watch the recording was it was a really nice session. And and I think it was very well received. I got a lot of positive feedback, but of course there were also a few people saying, why do we have these kinds of talks in the IETF? Why do we need to care? And but I think it's it's a positive way forward to bring up attention to these topics. If we do something or not, it is a different question and like at least leadership was very positive about this as well. Especially this talk from Marsha. And that's the second speaker here. She she explained very well like what happened in Iran over the last couple of years on like censorship. How they developed the technique and what are the kind of censorship they are applying right now from a technical point of view. But she also made a request at the end that the IETF should do something to circumvent censorship. And I think like bringing this to the IETF and starting a discussion is actually a nice thing. The the talk from last time about Digital Market Act. That one was also very well received, was a professor with economics and law based background, who was also an advertising role and an advertising and consulting role to the EU. So he could explain this very well and it's very relevant for our work because there's now the Mimi working group, which is like motivated by by these things and policy. Okay, I have one more slide. Or maybe actually two more slides. And just quickly to mention, we had two side meeting systems. These were not organized by the IB, but they are touch points here and we were aware of the side meeting. So there was one side meeting organized by the DCMS together with ISOC to have a meetup with policymakers, with local policymakers mainly. So this happened because the CMS actually came to us and to ISOC and said like you are in London, so we should like make use of that. And this was now organized as like a public side meeting, so everybody could join. It was on our side meeting agenda, which is a little bit hard to find, but it's publicly visible and was basically a panel between somebody from the DCMS and Lars, me and Colin, and have a discussion about how we can communicate in future. And like what are the touch points? Basically, I think that was received positively. And we we've been, we are talking with ISOC to restart the policy program and also figure out if like a forum like that is interesting for the future as well. So thank you for the support there from ISOC. I think this is really good to have this. And there was a second meeting that was organized by Article 19 and the Center for Democracy and Technology. So very similar format, but like actually a closed meeting. So it was not on the agenda, was only invited people. And there was not only panel discussion, but also some drinks, so like in a meetup meetup session. But also a little bit discussion about how the IETF works and why people should be involved or these kind of things. Just to make you aware. Next and final slide, hopefully. Yeah, so this one I just wanted to point out because Ted reached out to the IB informing us that you had a discussion about attacks on the internet or impacts on the internet. And I sent a small reply already, but maybe this is something we want to discuss now. And we had a discussion about that at the last IETF meeting in July, or not about that, but like about internet governments in general and any kind of yeah, attacks or dangers there. And that was triggered by a paper that was kind of actually proposing to have like some more overarching government group or whatever. And the outcome of our discussion was mainly that we should maybe put more effort in explaining how the current government system works and that all these different groups actually like have a very defined role and they work well together. And 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 what the principles are behind this and also the principles of the internet and what will break if you change the system. So what we're trying to do with very slow progress is to write like a document that explains these things and then points to existing RFCs or existing documents as much as possible as well. But having everything in one place and also publish it more like a white paper style thing and not like an RFC. So it's maybe more accessible to to a different audience. So that's our plan. But if you have more input, I'm happy to hear it. Or maybe this is actually a topic where we should have a broader discussion at another point of time and then take some time for it. Okay, that's it from my side. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And I noticed that the at the end you were talking about a broader joint discussion. That was one of the things the IB suggested in its response to the Board of Trustees question on how to make effective some of these discussions of defending the internet. And I think there was a positive reception from several members of the board that scheduling a joint discussion would be a great idea. I will say that I think that the obvious time to do it would be something like the overlap time between the Board of Trustees meeting and and IETF and the next time that will happen will be in Yokohama. So we we could aim for that. There is a bit of a point about that though that I'll make. So we might want to do it one in advance of that, just a regular call. A little bit easier to schedule and a great deal faster. And that is the other is that at the end of an IETF, the IB tends to be very, very tired. It does a lot of work over those days. And so having a deep policy discussion when people are ready to go out for an ice cream cone and a nice sit is probably not going to be the most effective. So we'll we'll be in touch about scheduling that. And I think probably at least initially, we might do that on a call, either one of our calls or one of your calls. And we'll work from there. I think one of the questions you asked in that was whether or not it would be a public call. Generally speaking, the Board of Trustees does as much as it can in public. But if the IB feels that there are things that it wants to discuss on camera, you can let us know and we can have an executive session for that as well.
Yeah, actually for us, our discussion happened to happen at the last IETF meeting. And when we meet in person, these are actually not public calls. So but I, yeah, I have to go back to the IB and check out what they want.
Any other questions for Maria?
Thank you for that. I just wanted to see if you could get a copy of your slides. I know we have the report, but you mentioned one particular talk that you thought would be good for people to watch, which is linked in there and I would like that. So if you could send those, that would be terrific.
I just sent the last update this morning, but you should get them eventually.
That's okay, I didn't see them. Thank you.
The 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 update this morning, just in time. Any other questions for me? Go ahead.
Okay, my apologies. Just well done, but that was a mistake on my part, sorry.
I'm sorry, I cannot hear you. Can you say again?
Okay, so my system was malfunctioning, so it was a mistake raising my hand the first place. My apologies.
No worries. Thanks for being here as an observer. Okay, well, thank you again, Maria, for coming and for the report and we look forward to the further discussion.
Thank you. Then I will leave you and enjoy your meeting. I'm just happy to go home.
I think the next thing would be the IETF Trust. Victor?
Yep.
Sorry that you aren't able to join us this morning in person. I hope you feel better soon, but thank you for presenting this report.
Yeah, no problem. Just to clarify, will you drive the slides from there or you want me to drive the slides from here?
Can you drive them from there?
Absolutely, just one moment. Bigger. Select delay. Are those visible?
Yes, they are.
Excellent. Okay, I'm covering the presentation today. Glenn was unable to make it. So I'll walk through the slides. These are the same ones that folks would have seen earlier this week at the plenary. So I'll do my best to represent the data. I am the newest member of the trust, having come in during the summer. And so here we go. Sorry, can I get to the next slide? The trust is made up of five members. This is the formation of the IETF Trust since the IAS two changes a couple of years ago. Three of the members, which include Glan Dean, Kathleen Moriarty and Joe Halpern, are nominated through the standard IETF NOMCOM. And they serve a rotating three year, there's a three year commitments for each one of those appointments. Stephen is the member currently on the trust as appointed by the ISG. And I'm currently on the trust as of this year as appointed by the Port of Trustees, the ISOC Port of Trustees. The purpose of the IHF Trust, and this is something that's been not always well known by all the members of IETF and across the greater community. But in short, the next couple of slides will kind of walk through what the trust is supposed to effectively do. What's the core responsibility of the trust? It's effectively there to manage IP assets and to enable those and protect the ownership and to be able to enable use of those assets. And we say IP in this context, since this is the Internet Standards Community, it's intellectual property, not the protocol we know and love. And these whole IP assets for IETF, Ayana, I can in the internet community. This includes things like domain ownership, as you can see there from the list in the bullet points. It includes copyrights, I like IETF logos, photos, videos. An example of that that was brought to the day is, you know, as normal business goes on through the IETF meetings, there might be photographs taken from members or various scenarios. And all of those are included in the the assets that would be managed by the IETF Trust. There are granted rights that are part of the overall IETF process as per RFC 5378. There are trademarks that are part of the assets that are protected or managed through the IETF Trust. And then obviously software artifacts like the IETF tools, IETF Yang catalog and in such items there. So this is like a general overview of the types of things that the trust would caretake as part of that duties. A bit of a pictorial to describe. This is probably the best picture I've seen so far to kind of describe some of the contributions and how that relationship works with the community. As a community does, you know, as there's ongoing work within the community, there's these contributions and a lot of ideas. If you look at the top part of the diagram goes towards the IETF, the ideas go to the IETF. There are contributions and there there's a cyclical relationship with the IETF and the IETF Trust in terms of RFC copyrights that are part of that, but then there's the right to use of those of those rights. And then there's granted rights as per RFC 5378, which go to the trust and granted towards the IETF Trust. And those are licensed out now. There's a effective pattern of, you know, grants. Grants are really there for everyone to use, but they still need to be managed through and the actual trust themselves. So that's a kind of like a basic overview of the functions of the IETF Trust. Some updates since IETF 114, the LS4 badge artwork has assignment was completed. Another large change that occurred over the last couple of months is there's been a change in legal representation. There was a need for that based on the previous representation was representing both the IETF and the trust. And there seemed to be some challenges with that, or at least not being able to represent it in the best way. So there's a there's new representation with Andy Up the Grove, who's now now on board to represent the trust. There's been some corrections to RFC citations and the trust FAQs. The next slide will go into just those those updates. And a conversation that's actively underway and there was a meeting even earlier this week on some of those points was is the restructuring of the actual IETF Trust. That's currently active work. Just to briefly, this is the compilation of some of those changes to the FAQs. There was an error made in the FAQ around TLP modification that was reported. There's been some corrections to citations to RFC 3978 with respect to RFC 5378. And there's a link here with the old and new text updates. So people can go and reference those for themselves and see those updates. The restructuring, just to give you actually background. So currently the trust today is a is a Virginia trust. It's set up as an actual trust and the trustees hold personal liability as part of their roles in the trust. And so there's a move towards a corporation. Here you note that it shows Delaware Corporation, often in the US, the state you choose is particular to the, it just basically defines the the case law around what could be used that, you know, as part of that corporation and if there's any of the litigation, et cetera. But the reasons for this conversion is to resolve a few key items which are listed here. One is trademark registration issues. The second is around obtaining sufficient insurance coverage. This is actually one one key item. Today, insurance has to be purchased with respect to the trustees. That's becoming increasingly difficult to do in terms of both opportunity and cost. So that's another key driver. There's personal and related to that, there's personal liability to the actual trustees themselves, which has been, you know, an ongoing concern and challenge. And so based on that, there's work as noted to convert from the current model, which is a Virginia trust to an actual corporation. At which time the trustees would no longer necessarily be personally liable, but they would now be on the corporation. The corporation would then become liable for those those artifacts and IP works. So there's a lot of active work going on right now with respect to getting bylaw set up, how would the corporation be set up? Et cetera, there's lawyers involved as that gets all written up. The name of the trust had been a bit of a back and forth, i.e. the original discussion was, could we just be called the IETF Trust? That seemed to raise a lot of eyebrows and was not well received because trust means something in certain environments. So the title now agreed to is the IETF Intellectual Property Management Corporation. Seems elongated, but that was what was agreed to. And that will be what would be used to register the corporate name and various other items that are ongoing there. And and, you know, be reflected in corporation documents and bylaws as those are written up. In terms of some of the work ongoing respect to this conversion, here is a bit of a chart that itemizes some of those tasks. Just for clarity, these tasks are not all serialized. I know I think it was supposed to be on a slide, but it is not. These are, but these are just an itemization of various various tasks. Some of these obviously can be done in parallel. So you can see there's still quite a bit of work to do, but a lot of the foundational work has already begun and or been completed. So this is now an old slide, so I'll skip it. This was the office hours from earlier today. And that's the last slide. What I'll do is, I guess we can open up for some quick questions if there are any. There was a one other discussion point I'll probably raise. On Thursday, there was a meeting with various members of the IETF and the trust discussing funding. One of the challenges around one of the active discussions around funding for the trust is as a nonprofit in the US, the challenge of is there enough diversity of funding to maintain that position? I think those on the board would understand that that's a challenge with any nonprofit. And so there had been discussions. And so there had been discussions around whether those should be done by the trust themselves, i.e. solicit funding directly to the trust or to leverage the IETF engine to be able to generate those, that funding and manage it through there. I unfortunately was unable to make that meeting. I had some basic updates from there and I think Ted or other members that are in the room who may have been there that day may have heard those updates. But my understanding is of right now, there seems to be an overall agreement that leveraging the IETF as the source of those funding and maintaining that is the ability to, to bring in funds seems to be the more preferred method. And that seems to match discussions among the trustees themselves in that body of five members doesn't leave a lot of room to execute on trying to develop a funding model, execute a funding model. And the trustees, the thoughts are that, you know, they should be focused in on the actual execution of the trust mandate, which is to manage the IP assets. So that's my last main point. I hope that wasn't too quick and I was able to go through the material in an understandable way. And now I'll leave room for some questions.
Thank you very much. Just two, two points. One, in addition to this, there was a discussion as part of the general area dispatch meeting of a document that Lars had written, which was intended to, to set out the expectations of the trust. And during the discussion of that, kind of two points came out, one of which was it probably needed to narrow as a document to focus specifically on the expectations from the IETF community since post Diana transition, there are some other assets in the trust that relate to IANA. But that once that it was narrowed, it was also going to be delayed because they, they felt like attempting to finish that document while the form of the trust was being altered was a little bit difficult to, to work through two, two different things at the same time. And there was not sufficient urgency in writing up those expectations to try and get those done in advance of the, the the transition. So they'll pretty much wait until the transition is done. And then consider what, if anything, need to be written down about the expectations. On the funding, I did have a conversation with Lars about that. And I think that the issue there is that, as, as Victor notes, hiring a different funding fundraiser for the trust would be both expensive and confusing. Since it will have a relationship to the IETF, but not be the IETF LLC. The, the way forward with that appears to be that they will ask Lee Berkeley to include this within her remit as a fundraiser for the IETF, but ask that the funds go directly to this new management corporation as a 501, as a different 501(c)(3) in order to make sure that those funds contribute to the public support test for the 501(c)(3) that is being created. So rather than funneling everything through the IETF LLC, instead the IETF LLC will act as a friendly provider of fundraising services and not a supporting organization, but just a helpful, helpful friend to do something very similar, but to bring the funding directly into the 501(c)(3). If they work out a way to make that simpler so that the funds can go directly to the IETF LLC and then be distributed to the trust, they might do that. But the current plan is that the fundraising would be provided on a pro bono basis by the IETF LLC, but result in funds going directly to the trust. Are there other questions or comments about the trust?
It's always an exciting topic, Ted, so.
Having been on the trust, I must say it must have changed a great deal if it's always an exciting trust. So I think as, as folks will know from having looked at the board book, there is, there are a number of reports that we received as written reports as opposed to presentations, one of which was from the IETF LLC. And I believe we're going to look at just two quick pages from that that I wanted to call attention to. The first of them is in the report as page or slide four. And if you look at that, what you'll see is a, a quick review of what the current board work is for the IETF administration LLC. And I wanted to bring this to your attention. Because of course periodically we have to appoint somebody to this board. And so it's useful for us to review periodically what they're doing. So we know what kind of person to appoint. As you can see from this, they're working on retrospective on the COVID mitigations. They're, they're focusing on fundraising. They're working on the, with the IETF trust to support the bootstrapping there, preparing for their budget and looking at what's the new normal for hybrid meeting attendance and how do we adapt? That's one of the big ones because historically, although not all of the funding for the IETF has come from meetings, it has been a significant stream. And it hasn't been clear how significant a stream of funding it will be in the future. And the IETF LLC is looking both from an administrative perspective, how big a hotel do we need? How big a conference center do we need? And from a fundraising perspective, this particular meeting actually had over 800 local attendees, which is a big increase over Vienna, which was the first one we did that had an in-person component after COVID. So the, the trend line is definitely up, but we don't know where the plateau sits. So it depended on, on region, but for US 1, 1200, so about two thirds of, of what it would have been in the past. So again, looking at that, what would the venue contracts need to do to evolve to, to take that into account? And also the IETF has had separate COVID guidance for its meetings compared to the, to the local jurisdiction, in particular here, for example, you were required to wear masks in the meeting rooms except when speaking and advised to, to wear masks in any informal discussion, except when eating or drinking. And that's not the, the local jurisdictions guidance anymore at all. It might've been when we first made the decision to come back here, but it has evolved locally, but we did not change. So there's a question, at what point do we shift that? The other thing is it's somewhat difficult for the IETF folks to understand what the local norms are. Our next meeting will be in Japan and even if the, the local law might not require masks. Japanese norms around wearing masks are very, very different from the norms you would find here in London or in the US. So I think it's important for us to kind of work through how much of this needs to be perhaps more regulated in the IETF community, given local norms versus local laws. So that discussion is happening in the IETF LLC. The other thing on the next page, if you wouldn't mind, I just wanted to give everybody a quick look at their budget. Victor, did you have a question?
Yeah, I had a just quick question on the previous slide. Sorry. So you did mention it briefly that, but I wanted to just kind of ask it more specifically. How does the, does the LLC have an idea of how long they feel that COVID specific focus and or mitigation policies will likely be in place? I know it's, it's a very open and a question hard to answer. Just is it something that they feel like will be indefinite period of time? Will it be the next couple of years? Or it's more like meeting by meeting type of assessment?
I don't have any vision into what the IETF LLC's view, that is Barry, did you?
Yeah, I talked with Jay about it the other day, actually. So it's certainly something that is revisited meeting to meeting. Part of it is consulting with the community about what the community wants. There's a balance of how many, how much need is there for masks versus how many people will not come if we aren't masked and that sort of thing, trying to maximize the participation in that regard and make, and get what the consensus of the community is. So it's, it's being considered meeting by meeting.
So if we return to the budget slide. So I also just wanted the board to be aware of how their current accounts look compared to the budget for the year. This is page five in the, in the slide deck. If you want to look at it locally, I'm not going to go into this in any detail. I just wanted to call your attention to it. Obviously there's some red on that. Some of that red is investments, which has definitely happened to not, not, not just the IETF LLC, but far more broadly. So it's, it's important for, for us to be aware of it. I'll also say that there is a big push from the LLC to try and bring in funds through their fundraising efforts while the match that we offered is in place, I think, at the, at the plenary meeting, Jason pointed out, I think six times. Given that there are only six slides in this, the fact that the match got basically as I mentioned, as many times as there were slides is worth us knowing. They're definitely anxious to take it, take advantage of that. Please, if you, if you have more questions about the, the deck, after you've read it, we can take them up on the list. Okay, I think our next are either the, the CHAC or OMAC. Have either of those folks joined for a moment? Okay. Do we have Olivier at this point? Cause we can bring him forward. Okay. So we'll take a short break. We'll capinate and when the, the CHAC or OMAC folks are ready, we will reconvene. So please be ready to come back at the top of that. Yep. Oh, you're here. Oh, good. I'm sorry. I think perhaps your, your indicator in, in the video conferencing system didn't tell us that you're here. So if you are here, are you going to present locally or would you like us to present your slides?
Present it. I'll go ahead.
Okay. So we'll go on with those reports now then. Please begin.
Okay. Could you put up my slides, please, from your end?
Yes, just a second, please.
Thank you. Okay. So while we're waiting for the slides to come up, just for those who may be new to CHAC, CHAC is the voice of the chapters to the internet society through the president and the CEO and of course the board of trustees. Our approach is moving from local to global, talking to each representative from each chapter around the world. CHAC SC is actually, the steering committee is made up of nine people, geographically elected based on their intent to volunteer for the service. So with the support of the, the staff and the ISO, we've been doing a lot, which depends on how we are advised or we are collaborating. That being said, whilst still also waiting for the slide to come up on your side. My name is Adibun Akimbo. I'm speaking from Nigeria. I'm in Africa and I'm the African geographical representative.
Thank you very much for joining us today, Adibunmi. And I believe that your slides are now ready. Just to indicate that you'd like them to events by saying next slide.
Yes, thank you. Okay, again, while the slides are still coming up. As of the last year, when we were doing this presentation, we, we're looking at amending our rules and procedures, which of course we've been able to do with our amendments. Okay, thank you. Well, next slide please. On behalf of the chapter advisory council, I want to say well done to everyone here at the meeting. Next slide. Okay, this members of, okay, previous slide. Yeah, these are members of the steering committee. I'm the vice chairman. The president, the chairman is actually unavoidably asking basically because some months ago he was involved in an accident and he's been undergoing some hospitalizations and treatment. We've always wished him speedy recovery. That being said, next slide. Okay, so as part of our outreach, we've been able to be involved in different regional calls, especially of what I've mentioned is Africa, where we get to call all chapters together and discuss. Of course, the main objective of such calls across continent is to always discuss on how to exchange information, transfer knowledge and sharing basic workable applications of our initiatives and also collaborating at different levels. Next slide please. As a, as a steering committee, we've been able to discuss issues in the ITU and the UN, which has of course led to a lot of more awareness about the challenges, which is of course the level of entries of such discussion. What aspect of that discussion are we going to discuss about? How do we approach such discussion? What are the roles of governments and how do we approach government in ensuring that the ITU, UN discussions become much more useful, you know, enjoying the fact that ISO represents the voice of the people when it comes to the internet. We are also looking at how to build frameworks to engage chapters either directly through the steering committee or indirectly through the committee. Our achievement in 2002 has basically been, been able to discuss with OMAC, which I believe should be right here. You know, on the border in this meeting and then STARS have also been successful to share different metrics with us. Next slide. Different matrix to the steering committee to ensure that we understand what the issues are and how to address some issues. In this, early this year, Eduardo Dais made a request and, you know, talking about interpretations of working committees, the challenge behind this is that ISO often translates all discussions into French and Spanish. So the discussion was basically, should we continue? Would this encourage more people from the French speaking and the Spanish speaking continent to be able to participate? It's a big challenge basically because when it comes to interpretation, it's sometimes very, very expensive to handle and also cumbersome. So agreeably, we looked at it, we put it up for debate. Next slide please. We put it up for debate and while debating, we've discovered that translation of agenda, translation of nodes, translation of comments often raise a lot, excuse me, offer a lot of issues. We put it also to a vote and believe that at the, the last meeting where we had a vote, 86.49% people believe we should carry on with English. Thereby, you know, being able to cross the challenges we feel we would undergo when it comes to cost. And the fact that it becomes, it slows down the system of discussion, often slows down the system of discussion. Next slide please. One of our basic topics for the year also included digital sovereignty, which we were able to get input from chapters across the globe. Of course, 22 chapters participated and two SIGs also participated. This looks to us like a high number basically because of various meetings we've held, various surveys we've held in the past. And we believe these inputs validate findings towards understanding and drafting a white paper on digital sovereignty. Next slide please. So from time to time, we're about to discuss issues concerning membership and the growth of chapters across the globe. Fortunately, chapter formation have also come with its own challenges. One of those are geopolitical challenges. Next slide. Now, when we say geopolitical challenges, these are, you know, concerning countries that often have issues of breaking away with other countries. You know, without mentioning any country, a country that says it wants to stand alone and believes strongly that by standing alone, it has to give itself a new name. Before now, ISO has always followed the ISO, ISO 3166 as a standard, which recognized names of country depending countries, special areas of geographical interest and their principal subdivision. What in this is the challenges we're having? Our countries who do not have such standard, who do not follow such standards. The steering committee over the past few months have discussed to a large extent. And we believe that we can come up with this following recommendations, as you can see on the, on the PowerPoint. So the six points pointing at So the six points pointing at how to formalize our reference, how to. Be quick about understanding how to such new applications when they're going through reviews. If their, their formal objectives are taken care of, how about the naming? How do we name them? So these are our own suggestions. I would believe that the board could look through them and consider giving us a formal support. Or more advice in moving forward from here. We want to be as apolitical as possible. That's our major objective with this particularly challenging naming challenge. I'm from Nigeria. If Nigeria decide as an example decides to be in two or three different. Sovereign countries, so, so to say, and Nigeria does not recognize the other two other paths who have decided to take up on a new name. Would I so go by to recognize those means and that would create a political issue that I saw would also be involved in. If I saw goes ahead to, you know, recognize them. But if I saw choose not to recognize them, we're also denying them or some for the mental human right. So like I said, the chapter steering committee, the CHC steering committee is looking at a way to be as apolitical as possible. Next slide, please.
So do you, do you actually want to take discussion on the, on this particular point at this, at this time? Or do you want to take the discussion on this at the end?
I wouldn't mind if anyone wants to take this question at this point.
But let's bring this, bring this slide back then. And I, I really want to call out your last point there. In, in any case where a chapter formation is not possible, it's really important for us to find other ways. For the individuals and in the possible situation. To participate in, in the Internet Society. And I think in, in many of these situations where it is not clear. Whether a state has been formed according to the ISO thirty-one sixty-six process. What we would prefer to do is to encourage those individuals to participate in ISOC in ways that don't actually require them to spend a lot of their time. Trying to argue about that point, but get on with trying to, to grow the Internet. And in many ways, I think that. That, that process is a distraction from our actual mission. It's clearly not our mission to help identify what states exist in the world. So if there's other things in particular, you feel that we ought to encourage staff to do. Or programs that need, that need for those who are stateless or who are in this condition, advice from the check on that point would be welcome.
Thank you for the response, Ted. I'll take that into my, I'll take that to the chapter steering committee.
Well, well, so this is Andrew Sullivan. The, the, the way chapters are defined right now. Statelessness is not a thing that we could support because chapters, the, the way this is stated in the, in the chapter principle. Is. Through a presence local to its community of interest. A chapter focuses on issues and developments important to its community. So you could talk about a stateless community in a given location. But it has to be in a location. There, there's a geographic principle here that is part of chapters. And if it's non-geographic, that's what a SIG is.
So, so I'm sorry that I was unclear. What I was trying to get at was. If there were programs needed to accommodate these folks as individual members. Parallel to the programs available to chapters, that would be something that we can do because those individual members do not have this chapter. Locality question. So I think that, that was my point and I apologize that it was not clear, Luis.
Yes, Luis Martinez, the, something that I have observed is that many chapters. That do not, or many individuals that do not have a regional presence or a local presence. They sometimes try to adhere to another chapter. And the tendency, at least what I see in Latin America, is to avoid other. Members from, not from the country to get into the chapter now. Long time ago, it, it happened a lot that maybe you were in Dominican Republic and you joined the Puerto Rico chapter. But nowadays, days because of many changes in rules, in financial rules. Or maybe regarding to charity organizations, the. These foreigner members are sent off to their countries again. So maybe we need to find another method to have these members from. A place where there is no Internet to join either. I'm thinking about the International Olympic Committee, the, on their. A flag in Switzerland or the, any other way to join ISOC without joining. A specific chapter.
So, so we can already do that, right? That both through the SIG mechanism and, and as individual members. And I think that the. There's been work going on, as, as we're all aware, for a long time to revamp the membership. Systems and hopefully with those new systems, our ability to interact with the individual members will increase. Even if they're not part of a, a specific chapter.
It, it's also the case that the. The, the rules about who may join a given chapter are entirely under the control of that chapter. They're, they're not one of the things that we specify. So there are lots of chapters that permit non-local membership. If I recall correctly, the New York chapter, Washington chapter and the Hong Kong chapter are all, are all examples of chapters. That will allow you to join whether Hong Kong still allows that, I'm not sure. So, so this is a, the, this is really up to the rules of the local chapter. And as you say. That might be constrained by like local banking regulations and so forth. There are lots of reasons why, you know, why those things could be, and, and so for instance, there are, while the New York chapter, just to pick on it. Permits non-local membership and in fact, foreign membership, like, you know, non-US membership. Not every foreign national would be eligible for membership in the New York chapter because of US rules.
Thank you very much. I think we can probably move on from this point now. So if you want to go to your next slide, I'd have been.
Okay, thank you so much for the contribution. Like I said, I would be taking this to the council for, for the discussions. We really appreciate it. Okay, so we're having our next council, all chapter advice for council members meeting fifteenth of November. And if you decide to take, you know, look at the list, you will find on this slide. The links, next slide, please. Okay, so yeah, I say big thank you. Thank you for discussing particularly the issue of. Chapter formation path before I take my, if I drop my page, I should state this clearly. For, for some of us in some other parts of the country, for example, I'm a resident in Nigeria. And I'm also a member of the US and Kenya ISOC group. I would love to, you know, take that on my shoulders, but the question bothers more about. What about my rights to have my own sovereignty? How do I decide? Who helps me to decide if I cannot have my own chapter, ISOC chapter? In the name I decide that I want to have it. This is a take home. This is not open for discussion. It's a take home for all of us here on the board to consider. Because at the back of the individual's mind, he or she believes strongly that if the Internet is for everyone and I come online. Then my takeaway should be the fact that if I say I'm this country and my country believes that it can stand alone. I think the best place to look for support would be on the Internet itself. Are we finally, how we finally address this situation would help us rather than again, you know, using the word. Keeping it in a stateless state by advising such individual members. To actually participate fully in other organizations, other platforms, all the chapters. Do not forget, we have a chapter for galactical members, which means you could also be, you know. Outside the app and still be a member of the Internet Society. On that note, for the records, I'll give me a keyboard for the chapter advisory council. Thank you so much.
Thank you again for your presentation. Are there questions or comments from the board? Please.
Thank you Ted. Thank you, Adenmumi, Adenmumi. Yes, the, this is Luis. I have two questions. The first one is what can you comment on current elections of the, the check? Yes, how's the process going? How many seats are going to be changed or if there are any seats to be changed? And the other one is related to the role of check as a bridge between the chapters and the board of trustees. Yes, the, when the check was created, it, it, it was thought to be. Good medium to connect the chapters with the board of trustees. And I'm not sure this has happened efficiently at least. So I was expecting in this, in this report to read more about not only the communication between chapters. Or between the international organizations and the chapters, but how about the chapters and the rest of ISOC? Yes, the, I don't see in the report this sort of communications. So I just would like to know if there is a plan or you feel it's okay? The way the check is acting towards communication for the internal organization at large. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Louis, for that question. Perhaps it was our own undoing not to, to have left out elections in the report, my apologies, on behalf of my board. And also communications, communication is actually very key. And that is actually what we are working on at the moment. Not to stay the honest net, not to stay in our honest net. As some of our members believe strongly that we should as a steering committee be asking more questions. If possible, be doing a flashback to past issues, for example, the state, the sales of PIR. And all other issues that we believe of concern to them. However, we believe strongly that we should be looking forward to, first of all, addressing the issue of our, our members. See the chapter advisory council. We're still in that discussion at our next meeting on the fifteenth of November. It is one of our major discussion put up on for the open mic for people to discuss. How they see the chapter advisory council and how they want the chapter advisory council to run. That being said, bringing back to the elections issues at the moment. We, we are running the elections very, very smoothly. Apologies. We are running the elections very smoothly. The chapter advisory council was able to appoint a chairman for the elections committee. Who happens to be the outgoing secretary of the current chapter advisory council. As it is the law, as it is in the bylaws, it is statutory for all the nine seats to be changed. We do not have a sitting bow out procedure. All nine seats will be changed. At the moment, all of us are up for election and those of us who wish to probably have a comeback, probably to, you know, volunteer to serve. I've put in our applications and that gone through the process of, we've finished the process of campaign. On, on November ten, campaign ceased and elections have commenced. By the twenty-fifth, election would have been concluded and the results would be out. So that said, for the elections and, you know, without much ado about Martin. Yes, the chapter advice to council would look ahead towards having pockets of meeting with the board of trustee. Prior to dates, it would go a long way to address a lot of issues, you know, you know, in the idea of communication. Probably we have been sent back a little based on the accident. That got our chairman involved and we've not been able to have much discussions around certain things. I've been able to move forward basically because of the. Reporting, let me use that word, reporting based on the number of chapter members. Who actually function in different working groups. We hope to work on that. If I come back, yeah, those are going to be issues that we're going to be addressing. If I do not come back, the minutes of meeting will state clearly. These are the challenges we need to address. Having to have more than one, you know, meeting with the board of trustees. Having to have series of feedbacks from the board of trustees to the chapters and also the SIGs. I hope that answers your question, Louis, and thank you so much for that question.
Thank you very much for the response. Are there any other questions from the board? Okay, once again, thank you very much. We appreciate it and we appreciate the continued efforts of the check to work for the mission of the society.
Thank you. Thank you, Ted.
Okay, we are running a little bit ahead and it looks like the folks from Omak in the local chapter have not yet joined us. So I'm going to ask to bring forward the, the item on signature authority. This is a, something you've seen in the past and it should be fairly short. Ilona, if, I believe you said you would be ready to, 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 to present that.
Sure.
Okay, so my apologies for a little bit of hopscotch with the agenda. We're just trying to fit that in before the other reports.
Okay, so I don't have the slides. I did send an email earlier this week and it. Contains two policies. One is for the Internet Society, one is for the Internet Society Foundation. And it's the policies on the signature authority and authorization. As Andrew mentioned, Rinalia and Sally are getting promoted to the managing director. And so we had to relook at our policies. So what you have in your emails are the updated policies. And because this is the board's authority to pass those policies, we ask that you take a look at them. And if there's any discussion, or if not, we'll call for the resolution.
So this, this was sent out. Ten days or so ago at this point, and it's fairly similar to the signature authority. Policy we had before with the changes to update, to recognize the, the new rules for Rinalia and Sally. Sally, are there any questions about the policy? Okay, so we'll have to take the two. Policy pieces related to the foundation during the foundation meeting. But functionally, what we're looking for at the moment is to make sure that people are okay with the new policy. And with the new delegated authorities table, which is schedule A in it. I'm not seeing any questions about that. No. So I guess the next question is if we can have the resolution up. Looks like we have it. So the proposed resolution is a resolution for the signature authority and delegation of authority policies Internet Society. Resolution states adopt updated signature authorization and delegation of authority policy. Policy whereas the board of trustees via resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-three adopted a signature authorization and delegation of authority policy. Whereas the board of trustees desires to update the policy resolved that the board of trustees hereby adopts the updated signature authorization and delegation of authority policy as presented. We'll take the Internet Society Foundation one during its thing, but are there any, is there any discussion of the resolution? Seeing none, may I ask you to raise your hand either in person or in the tool to signify ascend. Okay, thank you very much. I believe that's unanimous. So the. We, we just. We, we just approved the signature policy changes that, that you've seen in email. Okay, so the, the foundation meeting will have a very similar short section to disclose that. And I guess the next question, do we have the Omak folks? Not yet. Okay, we're expecting the local chapter at the bottom of the hour, which would be ten thirty local time here. So we'll take a short break till then, if we could pause the recording. Welcome Olivier. We're thankful that you were able to join us today and we look forward to your report. Please take it, take it away.
Thank you very much and I'll, I'll just turn my camera.
Thank you very much and I'll just turn my camera. I hope you can hear me well. Thank you and welcome to London. I guess we are, I can't say we're your local host because I'm not actually local, unfortunately. I would have wanted to join you guys, but I'm currently in Albania. I actually arrived from Turkey a couple of days ago and so a bit far away. Christian Larinaga is in Bath, but he only for a short while and couldn't make it to London. We're a bit scattered at the moment around the globe, but this is what the internet helps us do, which is to work remotely and be able to continue running the chapter from wherever we are in the UK or abroad, which is a good thing. Now, I think the last time you guys came to London was, was it four years ago, five years ago? It was a little while ago and we had some events that took place back then. We managed to organize some events with the government. And unfortunately, you come in at a time when the government changes on quite a regular basis in the UK. So organizing things has been particularly challenging. And for us, it's been particularly challenging to also organize other events. Because whenever we wanted to have ministers or people in the proposing policy and so on, things, the goalposts have kept on moving for quite some time. And we always thought that there would be another day, maybe wait another month for a little bit more stability. And then we would be able to get a nice, good, stable panel and develop the discussions. And things were always pushed back. Anyway, in the past years, well, I think I've noticed a number of you around the table are new. I do have to congratulate one of, one person in particular, that's George Shodovski, on his achievement, the Jonathan Postel Award. So well done, George. I was thrilled to watch the recordings of the proceedings on your award ceremony. But I think I know a few other people around the table. And I'm not sure to what extent you know the background of the UK chapter or UK England chapter of the Internet Society. It started in the late 90s as ISOC London chapter. And then it was expanded as ISOC England chapter. Because at the time, there was an ISOC Scotland chapter and there were discussions to have also in ISOC another chapter in the other parts of the United Kingdom. The Scottish chapter faded away and we ended up being the only chapter covering the whole of the UK, thus being called ISOC UK England, which is a little strange for some because some don't know the difference between the two, but it's UK England. And it's been going since the late 90s. 1999, I think, was the time when Christian Larinaga expanded it to this. We have about 1,700 or so members listed. But as with any chapter, they don't all take an active part in the running of the chapter. So we do have a nice footprint, being able to disseminate information to a large number of people. But as of the active members, you find there's a much, much smaller set of people that are involved in both the discussions on our policy mailing list, but also the discussions that take place when we have either face-to-face meetings or webinars. We do have a lack of face-to-face meetings in the past years because of COVID, of course. And the UK was particularly badly hit. So people are generally more reticent these days to actually go to face-to-face meetings. And they really enjoy the idea of being able to have in face, well, not face-to-face, but online meetings using Zoom and that's been very well accepted. So the last year, we had one hybrid event, which was with the British Computing Society. And it was about the threat to DNS. And we had two aspects of this, one being the technical threats, including the DOH and the needs for IoT, the potential architectural changes for 5G, but also the political threats such as nationalization of DNS resources and other moving goalposts that we see on the policy side of things. We also had, and that was a hybrid event. So we had a few people that turned up and it was interesting to see that we had more people online than people coming to the face-to-face meetings. Well, in the past, this was completely different. We had more people at the face-to-face meeting than online. The other event we had last year was, another interesting event we had last year was rebuilding and enhancing trust in algorithms. The chapter has maintained an interest in algorithm diversity and algorithm neutrality for quite some time. And the lack of neutrality is one of the things. So it's more like algorithmic bias of some sort. And we have worked with Ensi Gar Körner and his group of researchers with an EPS RSE, so this is a sort of research grant funded called Reen Trust, a follow-up to previous projects in the previous years at the University of Oxford, Edinburgh and Nottingham. And the things that were discussed there and that were studied, where what are the user expectations and requirements regarding the rebuilding of trust in algorithms? A few years ago, the question was, do people have trust in algorithms? The answer now is no, they don't. Because they feel, of course, due to the advent of fake information and the whole discussion that takes place about people being in their own bubbles and so on. And so more transparency is required in those algorithms. And the question is, how can one create that transparency? So this group was really, has done some serious and very deep work on this. And to what extent the user trust can be regained through technological solutions or through some way to show that algorithms can be trusted? With the limitations that we have today, where most of the companies that use these algorithms are saying this is proprietary information. So they can't actually share what exactly the algorithm does. Because obviously, that's the way they see it and that's their work. So that's the stuff that we had last year. Now, of course, we also had a process, which is a longstanding process that we thought was going to be much shorter than this on the UK online, where it started as online harms. It started in way before May 2021, where we had early signs that such a bill was coming up. Now, for those that don't know it, the Online Harms Bill, which in fact now has been renamed Online Safety Bill, aims to make the UK internet the safest in the world. And we're thinking, well, okay, safest, fair enough. But safest for who and for what? And what do you mean by making the internet the safest in the world? The main flaw with this bill is that it paints with a single stroke pretty much the whole, what we would call technologically as the stack, from the lower layers all the way to the application layer. And is imposing a whole number of rules and of recommendations that require tracking, that require recording, that require full analysis of traffic. And that effectively have a number of unwanted, unwanted consequences, that's the word, unwanted consequences, such as, for example, the weakening of encryption. There was a recent debate actually regarding this online safety bill at the UK IGF, which took place, just I think it was last week. And it was interesting to see how far apart the sides are, where the proponents and the supporters of the online safety bill are saying one thing and saying, no, it doesn't weaken encryption, it's not a backdoor, it's not, none of what you're accusing it to be. But at the same time, it has all the flavors of that. Because they're saying that's what, well, what it needs to do is something. And when they explain it, it basically is what they say it isn't. So it's a complicated one. And we have been, of course, working very hard with the Internet Society as well, with the help of staff to try and bring some sense into this debate and to try and move away from the emotions and actually have some technological questions and answers and proposals in order to have a bill that is not going to start breaking things and start creating more harm than it actually is supposed to be, to be preventing end users from. So that was one, that's one of the ongoing issues and it's not finished yet. The bill still hasn't passed in Parliament. We had some prime ministers that wanted it done within a couple of weeks and others slowed it down. And of course, then the political debate went elsewhere. And so there's still a part that one can play. The difficulty being though, that we are up against a highly emotional set of arguments that are basically saying, well, you know, children are being abused and child sexual abuse material is available online and terrorists and all these people are making use of the internet in a certain way. And this bill is going to be the one that saves us all from all of this material and makes the UK internet much, much safer.
So can I drill down on this point a little bit? Because I know this is of interest to the board. Clearly, the bill as it's currently written has a number of concerning elements, two of which I think you already touched on and I wanted to kind of get a little bit of discussion around. One is encryption. It looks in the bill right now as if it is an offense under the bill to turn over material to Ofcom, which has been encrypted, which functionally means many service providers that would normally be cooperative, which no longer have access to unencrypted versions of traffic. If they turn over the encrypted versions as a response to an Ofcom inquiry, would be chargeable as offenders under the bill, which certainly seems like it's highly problematic, given the current mix of traffic on the internet and the fact that the providers themselves don't control that, right? I mean, it's something where the encryption takes place between an end user device and a service, which neither of which may be under the control of the provider. The other of which is the, is the elements that Ofcom will be charged with for verification of identity. And there's a great deal of concern, especially the category one providers who must verify identity. Not simply that someone is an adult, but the identity associated with the adult. How was that debate going from your perspective on those two elements? And what do you think that means for how the internet, can the internet be for everyone? If the internet must always be attributable, there's a big question there.
Unfortunately, you're absolutely right Ted. And unfortunately, the debate, and you will, I don't know whether you've seen that discussion at the UK IGF, but the debate was a little bit like seeing two sides that are saying their points, but not meeting in the middle. And Alec Muffet was the gentleman who made the points that you made and others. One of the points being, well, if the UK implements such a system, what stops another country like, well, a country that is less democratic than the UK, implementing exactly the same thing and using it to actually control their people? And the answer is, well, that goes beyond the debate that we need to have here. It's a case of, well, you know, we're going to create something, but we don't really want to know what it's going to cause and the consequences of what we're creating here. The other thing that came out of that discussion, and it is, by the way, the first one that has, that I felt was one that was balanced, because often you get people from the same side. The chapter tried to organize a discussion with the different parties in the early part of the year and we were unable to do so. Whenever one side heard, oh, they're part of it, oh, no, well, no, we don't really want to engage into a discussion here about this. We want to engage in a discussion about this in Parliament or another forum, but not in a forum that is outside the realm of Parliament. This is the problem, when you've got the technologists that understand what they're talking about, they're not able to actually access, to directly access a debate with people that are of enough, of a certain level to be able to make changes in the policy itself. What transpired, it appears from the discussions at the IGF, at the UK IGF, was that we're going to pass the bill and yes, it's got a lot of problems with it. And when we'll implement it, we'll see what works and we'll see what won't work. And I personally find this flabbergasting to put together a policy where there is a question mark as to whether it will actually be implementable in the way that the policy is drafted. It's very disappointing to see something like this, where you're going to end up with, or you're very likely now to end up at this stage with a piece of legislation that is not going to be fit for purpose and that is going to cause also some additional problems. I don't know if anyone else has a comment on this or thought about this. But, and I'm just sharing my personal views. I haven't had a chance to discuss it with my colleagues in ISOC UK. But I know that several have also emitted deep, deep concerns about this, being some very flawed piece of policy that is just being pushed through for political reasons, because we need to do something. And then they can just put as, oh, tick the box, we've now made the internet safe.
So if only, if all it really took was ticking a box to make the internet safe, we'd have done it a long time ago. Pepper?
Yeah, so, yeah, hello. I would agree completely and actually it's worse than that because there's a contagion factor. Because the UK is seen as, you know, you know, one of the better countries for evidence-based rulemaking, evidence-based legislation. And this is clearly not evidence-based. And so for those countries where it's even less well-intended, you know, it's going to be used as a reason to frankly, try to fragment the internet, break it down and create in the name of security, safety, protecting children, you know, digital sovereignty. And we're going to see this as, you know, used in many places for, you know, not so well-intended reasons, even if here it's completely ill-informed. At least it's to some extent well-intended. And so I think that we don't have to worry about the contagion factor.
Hi, John Peterson. I mean, is it our assessment that it is merely ill-informed and not that there is no ulterior motive to this? I mean, because I mean, it seems to me almost impossible that someone could really think that this is going to work. If unless they have a level of ignorance that would not even ascribe to a cabinet minister, right? So like, yeah, I have seen the government, yes.
So this is the issue and Oliver, you know, you can the political, so this is the issue where you have politics, not policy. And it's, it's, the goals are, again, we have to do something, so we're going to do something.
But we don't think there's an ulterior motive to actually create a splinter net in the UK behind this, right? That is merely using this. We don't believe that's the case?
No, I don't believe that. It's just an unintended consequence. And no matter how much we mention this unintended consequence, there are, it falls on deaf ears because of the emotional debate from the other side, the very strong lobbying that has taken place, not just recently, but for many, many years, to say, we need to make sure that now we make the internet safe. And safe means whatever it means. I mean, okay, it means basically stopping any kind of traffic that might be, that will be considered harmful to specific segments of the UK society. And that of course includes hate speech, et cetera. That includes a whole lot of things, not just child sexual abuse material. But it's, the thing is, some seem to think that there's a silver bullet. You do something and then it will be safe. And that's where there's a deep flaw. Unfortunately, the politics in the UK right now work a little bit like this, where we need a silver bullet in order to be able to, you know, make, stay in power for a little more time. There's so much chaos at the moment. We need to show that we care and that we're doing something and that previous governments have not.
Yeah, John.
Pepper, Laura's next.
I'm sorry.
Pepper, Laura is next. We'll come back, come back to you, I promise.
If what you're saying is relevant to the current point, please continue.
No, I was just going to respond to John, that the official UK government position at the ITU Plenary Pottery was to oppose SplinterNet, was to oppose data localization. So at the government level, right, among the, you know, the FCO people, I mean, the people who actually understand these things, was to strongly oppose those kinds of efforts. And along with, you know, the US and others, and were effective in pushing back on those efforts. So I actually don't think it's intended, ill-intended. So I actually don't think it's intended, ill-intended in that sense, but there's, it's politics, not policy.
So we'll chime in there. I think my perception of this issue here is that I don't think any of these folks in government understand the concept of SplinterNet, right? Like, I don't think they know what they're doing essentially. And then my question for you, Olivia, is what can we do to support you in this? Because it seems like, I think we're all pretty much in agreement that this is a terrible idea and will have terrible consequences. But I'm not really, I don't think any of us really know how to move it forward in a more positive direction.
Yeah, thank you. I, I think you should just keep on doing what you've been doing so far. You've really been very supportive of the chapter and, and of course, with your bilateral discussions independently of, of the chapter through the connections that you have in, in being able to engage with the, with those concerned in, with the policymakers. But as, as, as Pepper says, there's a lot of politics in this now. And we are faced with some public servants that are basically saying, I'm sorry, at the moment, I can't do anything. I'm told we have to go this way. And, you know, I know we were saying the opposite before. And, and this is where then the discussion goes into, the bill will be voted and at implementation, it will have to be changed or, you know, it will, we'll have to see if it can, can be implemented or not and how it can be implemented. And there'll be, I, I would imagine there'll be a lot of discussions with the, it's all about social media, really, with the main social media companies. The likes of, of, you know, the GAF, well, the, yeah, the GAFs effectively. And it's not, it's not a, it's not an accident that you actually have such a strong presence of Facebook and Apple and, and these companies that are heavily involved in content these days, based in London, because that obviously is where they're going to have to do a significant amount of work. The, the critic, of course, the concern is that they might end up with a solution or some middle-of-the-road solution that only they, the big companies, are able to sustain. And any smaller organizations and smaller companies will just not have neither the manpower nor the technology to do. And that, of course, is another type of splintering or, well, it's more like, it's not even splintering, I think. It's basically reducing the number of actors that are out there. And, you know, so some sort of, it's not even consolidation, because you're basically shedding away whoever it is that is not able to follow. And that's a concern that we should have too. But yes, you've done really great job so far. And I think that if we can continue that dialogue, and of course, the chapter will be fully behind the efforts of the Internet Society on this. And we hope that it'll be in the other direction too. I wish some of my colleagues who knew a lot more about this in depth were, were with us. But trust me, this is an issue which we have many, many concerned discussions about with many, many concerned folks around the UK, including people that were previous policymakers and that just don't understand why we are edging towards the, you know, the edge of the precipice when the UK has traditionally been at the forefront of policymaking and supportive of the modus. They call the model supporter of one internet supporter, or all the values that the Internet Society supports. So it's, it's quite bizarre to be in this situation today, but unfortunately, that's, that's where we are. It's not the first thing that is bizarre in UK politics at the moment.
So I have Andrew and then Charles.
Thanks. So just a couple of items that I will point out. We are working, the staff is working closely with people in the UK on, on this topic. We co-authored a, an impact assessment on the, on the online safety bill. And, and of course, we've, we've been working on these ideas of like digital sovereignty. That report is about to come out. We, you know, we developed the impact briefs precisely so that it was possible to provide these kinds of things so that policymakers would not be able to claim, oh, it's just, we don't understand this. I, I do think there is one other thing that, that is important to recognize here. And that is, it's very easy to fall into the habit of thinking of governments as having a unity, right? So like, what is the government policy on this? But of course, within an, an organization as large as the UK government, you have factions. And some of those factions are, I, I think John's question was, was appropriate. Some of those factions simply don't care whether they wreck the internet. They're, they're interested in other things. And like, if the internet happens to fail, either that's like just too bad or for that matter, maybe a good thing, because what they're really after is sort of more social control or something like that. And I think that we are seeing the emergence of that. Like, the UK is not in any way unique in that, in that respect, right? We're seeing that all over the world in places where we used to think, hey, we're, these people are our allies last week. You know, we have to ask ourselves, hey, is this, you know, do we have the, the kinds of support that we, we want? And just to foreshadow a little bit, of course, we will have some more projects on this very topic for next year. So when we talk about the action plan for, for next year, I guess tomorrow, that will be one of the things that we'll be asking this board to approve to make sure that we can, you know, continue to press forward on this thing, because it's an urgent problem.
I have Charles and then John.
Yeah, I think a few points to add for myself. First of all, I think it's not unique to the UK. Definitely is very much the same situation in many of the democratic countries around the world, including Australia, including Canada, including the US. Even though probably in the US that laws were proposed, but they weren't passed yet. Or maybe they would never get passed because it's the US. So, but, or Germany. I mean, the hate speech laws in Germany a few years ago were very well copied by other countries, including Singapore and so on, and expanded on, by, you know, countries that are less democratic. So this is a, an issue that has been around for a long time. And so I, I, I think the situation in the UK is definitely not unique. But I also want to point out another fact to consider, which is that when we talk about the internet, the concept of the internet to us is very different from the concept of the internet for many of the lawmakers and politicians. To them, the internet is Facebook, Google, and so on, and so on. So to them, this is evil. They equate the internet with those companies or the, or, you know, some of those factors that are represented by some of the behaviors of these companies. So I think that is also one, 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 one issue that we need to try to explain better to the globe, to the wider community, including policymakers, that the internet isn't about those companies alone.
John?
Yeah, just a clarifying question, maybe even a question about Ofcom's remit. But do we anticipate the offenders from whom they would be trying to seize data in this instance would be more the Vodafone, right, that this is connected to, or Apple? Like, is there anything in the legislation that would lead us to think this is a way they're gonna pressure operators to give this? Or is it really the Metas, right, and the Apples and the Googles that, does anybody know?
Olivia, do you?
I, I, I think that, that Charles put his, you know, his finger on it. I don't think they even go to that level. They just see it as social media, Facebook.
But I was talking about Ofcom's remit in particular. So does Ofcom have the same regulatory power over Meta that it does over Voda?
Well, what, once it goes into a bill, it's not down to the agency that actually is proposing the bill. It's, then it becomes law, then it's, I don't know what agency.
I mean, I, I know you called out Ofcom Ted in the passage you were reading, which is why I was asking that much more narrow question.
Yeah, I mean, Ofcom's remit has expanded over the years. It used to be just Oftel, telephone services. Then it became Ofcom with all sorts of things that were added to this. And, and now it seems that they're expanding their remit. Now, they're, you know, the people at Ofcom are actually very reasonable people. But it's, they're just, you know, the pressures, the outside pressures from the likes of GCHQ, the likes of those other pressure groups that are saying, no, no, we need something much stronger than this. And, and you, you are the people that have to, to, to push this forward. But, you know, I, I should emphasize the whole point, which I find absurd, which is, let's implement this flawed bill. And sorry, let's pass the bill and then we'll think about implementation. And if it's not implementable, well, we'll have to find a solution. That doesn't sound like proper policymaking. That, that's the big concern that we have, because it might be the first of a number of other bills also that then will be passed this way. And even more restricted, a few years ago, we had the Regulation of Investor Goodry, Investor Goodry Powers Bill, which was also something that had some, some parts of it that went way further than we'd ever seen before. One of them being that an internet service provider needs to coordinate the work with a security agency to be able to hack into somebody's computer. They're not allowed to tell the person that they're doing this. And the government is there, allowed to go in there, take information, remove information from your machine if it has, if it manages to, to have access to it. Something that would never be allowed in the real world without a warrant is something that could be allowed in the, in the virtual world. And the question is, has it been used since? Probably not, probably not possible technologically these days, because people implement their own firewalls on their machines. But, you know, this is, it's, it's part of a, a set of bills that are supposed to make the landscape a lot, a lot clearer than what it was with the multiplication of small bills that were voted over the years. And yet it's actually not making it clearer, it's actually making it a lot cloudier and, and a lot, no pun intended, by the way. But a lot, a lot worse than what it's supposed to be. And it, it just leaves us as a, a community of, of people who know their way around technology baffled as to what the intent is at the end. Although we don't think there is malicious intent, there appears to be some way of, oh, well, let's have more control from a certain part of the political field. And, and they're seeing this as an opportunity for them to, to have the added, the added control over information. And that's a concern as well.
And to give you kind of a more direct answer, I put something into, into the board chat that gives you a pointer to the bill. And on page 70, you'll see how Ofcom assesses each different ones of these. So that under part three, for example, search engines are included. Clearly not Vodafone at that level, combined services, user-to-user services, et cetera. So the remit is definitely different. And it's interesting because DCMS, which is the, the group that actually is the sponsoring ministry for this, in many other ways, has very sensible ideas about the internet. And I think perhaps the message we have to, to give to, to pick up on something that Olivia said before is silver bullets are for werewolves. And of all the problems the internet has, lycanthropy really not one of them. We really have to get them to understand that this is significantly more complex than any silver bullet will ever address. And that some of this extension of power, once extended, is impossible to retrieve. I think the, the point that Olivier made before about the law being passed and then in implementation changed is a significant departure from the rule of law. It's not simply problematic for the internet, it's problematic for the entire system of the rule of law to have the government say, we'll pass something that's incredibly broad and then work out later how it applies to the actual lives of its citizens. Because that then becomes a matter of government intent rather than the rule of law. Given the possibility of government intent shifting over time, as it certainly has from government to government, even in a country as stable as the UK, that's problematic for us. The other thing that's incredibly problematic is the point Charles was making, that these things are written with Twitter in mind. And we're currently seeing Twitter dissolve into a whole bunch of other services that might not meet the threshold that this currently implies, because it's built with thresholds in mind of who has to comply. And, you know, if you're now in a federated system like Mastodon or one of the possible replacements that does this, nothing might apply. And the entire intent of the bill to try and make sure that there is a way to see whether a service is being used to disseminate hate speech or child sexual content or something like that disappears because the bill was written to the incumbents rather than to the actual underlying systems. And I think it's, it's problematic on so many different ways. I'm incredibly grateful for the work that the staff is doing on it. But I think that the board has to be ready from the point of view of defend, which we've discussed in the past, that more and more folks that we saw as allied with our intent and our efforts on the government sphere may no longer, if they're not actually adversaries, they're no longer allies. And that's, that's the situation we have to deal with. Charles?
Just one quick point, talking about the political side about this whole thing and building allies. I'm, I'm sort of thinking that we can expand a bit more on the, on the aspect and the point about censorship and, and that sort of implications if such kind of laws are passed with the hope of solving one particular or few problems, such as hate speech or, or sex, or, or, or child porn materials and so on, but having the side effect on some other, the other countries. So realizing that there are other factions in governments or the legislature and so on, or the political parties that are more concerned actually about the issues of censorship in other countries. Could be Iran, could be Russia, China, and so on. Realizing that, you know, trying to let those factions understand the side effects and, and so on, so that they might be also a kind of, you know, when the whole discussion are going through the legislature and the government, you know, we could have those fashion, factions coming out at a, at the right time, hopefully, to, to, to counterbalance the sort of push from the, from the people that are concerned about the most populous issues like child porn and so on.
So I'm afraid we drilled down so far into this that it's gonna be a little bit hard to get back to the rest of your presentation. But Olivia, if you, if you want to continue now.
Well, thank you. Well, just, just a couple more, more mundane matters, I guess. The, I was going to talk briefly about the IPv6 matrix. I think some of you might be aware of it. It's this website and crawler that crawls the, the world's one million largest information servers and checks for IPv6 connectivity. We were running it for 10 years on a very old, old set of servers, which finally gave up on life. And we had to revive them in the middle of COVID. We managed to extract them, they, they were running at the University of Southampton. And thanks to some heroic work by the people over there in going around the, the bans on being able to even get out of your house, they managed to take those servers out, send them over to London. We took the information out and we've now fully virtualized them. Having done a, a deal with a, having a, found a sponsor for the virtualization engine for the hosting, basically, in the, in the, in Mythic Beasts, the very, they were very kind to, when they saw one of our presentations, say, oh, we'd, we'd be interested in hosting this. And so they're providing the space. We got a, we received a large grant award to be able to basically rewrite the software, because it was written on an operating system that was more than 10, 10 years old. So you can imagine the number of security holes in the operating system. And of course, the, the big problem being that the libraries were, had to all be updated, et cetera, et cetera. Anyway, to cut a long story short, it's back in, it's back up and it's running every month. And it's, you can go to ipv6matrix.org and you'll see the, the results. We haven't changed the interface, we just kept it to what it was, but the information is pretty much the same. And the crawler was completely rewritten from scratch. And we were happy to find out that the results continued in the, in the, in the correct line. So there was no big error or mistake or, or something that had gone wrong in the, in the version one that dated from, I think it was 2010, which in internet terms is probably a lifetime. So that's, that's still running. And then we've also got a lecture, an online webinar coming up with something a little bit different. Jesse Sowell from UCL, researcher at UCL, is going to speak to us on Thursday, the 17th of November, about the operational infra-complex of the internet. And here he's digging into the complex relationships between different companies that are providing you this internet service, whether it's at the connectivity level or it's actually at a higher level. As you know, there's a, there's the, the web itself, but there's a web of companies that work with each other that exchange information about you, sometimes with contracts and sometimes without contracts. And he's certainly doing some research and digging into this. And it's again, another fascinating thing, because it's, I guess, another aspect of what we call the internet ecosystem. We're well knowledgeable about the internet ecosystem when it comes down to internet governance. But here it's about internet commerce and how, how the internet actually is, is funded and funds itself. And I guess as we now reach the, a point in time when there are some major changes and you might have all read that recently, that advertising is, is not bringing as much, as much money as it used to before to those big, big organizations. And they're certainly have, they're And there certainly have, there are some cuts that have affected a number of the big companies out there. It's interesting to dig into the actual way of how the whole ecosystem works together. Anyway, I know very little about it, but Jesse knows a, and he knows amounts. I invite you, and I will make an announcement, I think probably later, today or tomorrow, about the webinar on Thursday. I invite you to take part into it and learn along with me. Perhaps some of you know more than I do. So anyway, that's all really for the chapter. As I said, I'm really sorry that none of us were able to meet with you in person. But we are looking forward to a future time, the IETF will be in town again. I'm sure that there'll be a future occasion. By then, I probably won't be the chair anymore, I've been chair for quite some time. We've got elections that are coming up. So I don't know. I'm told I might do just another round, just to make sure the ship sails after the rough weather that we've had with COVID and with all that. But beyond this, I'm open to any other questions. Thank you.
Well, thank you again for being here today. Are there any other questions for Olivier? Luis?
Yes, thank Olivier, this is Luis. We have heard a lot of strengthen the internet. But what about grow the internet in the UK? There's still challenges that are seen from the chapter here in growing the internet apart from the critical infrastructure. Are we looking still to, of areas that should be connected to the internet? Maybe the North, the Highlands or something like that, Orkney Islands, you know, Shetland.
Thank you very much, Luis. Actually, yes, thank you for pointing this out, because that's one point which we did have a discussion about also internally. The UK has or had a broadband plan. I think it was Boris Johnson that had a few years ago come up with a broadband plan where there was going to be fiber to X number of homes and, you know, very, very high percentages and so on. Unfortunately, it hasn't lived up to its hype, and so we're still far away from those numbers. There are still some parts of the country that are in actual black holes where there's no fiber, very little copper, which is a difficulty, or at least the speed on ADSL or XDSL, whatever DSL type it is, is very low. And even black spots when it comes down to mobile connectivity. 3G is sometimes, 3G, not four, three, forget about five. 3G is sometimes hard to get by. I know I've introduced a couple of friends that live in the hills, just outside Bath, that have such problems. And so it's, and you don't have to go even as far as the Highlands to reach this. There is unfortunately, due to the changes in governments, there doesn't seem to have been a follow-up on this. And this is something which there needs to be really a follow-up on. There is a second problem with UK legislation, which is the very tight legislation around community networks. In some parts of the world, wherever there was a black spot somewhere, people managed to arrange things with each other. And of course, the Internet Society has been really helpful with this as well. I remember the project in Georgia being such an amazing success. And projects, I should say. And there have been some of our members that have been interested in implementing community networks. Unfortunately, the legislation around being able to run your own wide area network by being able to just even lay a cable across the street to the other side of the street or actually have a wide area network that is a radio network of some sort. Legislation is so complicated that many have tried and have failed. Because it involves costs, it involves time, it involves talking to not just one agency, but many different actors. And there appears to be no interest in the government, from the government, in making this easier. So that's why we haven't seen that many successful wide area community networks in the UK. And those that have been implemented were actually usually implemented with the help of a local telecommunications firm that has the actual licensing agreements to be able to do what it needs to do to roll out the network. And that means it's usually been done in built-up areas and not in those parts of the UK that are the furthest from, the furthest from a town center.
Victor?
Yeah, a question on the, you had mentioned rural access for internet. What's the status on utilizing lower band for reach in rural areas? Is it still, in the UK, is use of 600 megahertz still a challenge for, you know, to be able to use for those reaches? Anyway, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, thanks, Victor. I'm going to be frank with you, I don't know, to be honest. I haven't followed this very closely. I know that Christian Delarynaga has, if you want, we can follow up with you afterwards and let you know. My understanding is that there hasn't been much, well, there hasn't been anything that's helped recently to make things easier. So I would have to check for that.
Sure, yeah, we could follow up online, that's no problem.
Luis?
Yes, thanks, Olivier. So it means that in this previous theme about the digital regulation may be another obstacle for growing the internet, because you have current regulation that makes very difficult to set up wireless LAN or AirLAN. And then the, now if you add these problems with content regulation that the Ofcom is leaded to, then it will mean that it will become very, very difficult to set a legal network working in your community. Do you foresee an advantage in adopting Wi-Fi 6? Because I'm not sure about the status of the UK in, towards Wi-Fi 6, but maybe the same as the other side of the channel, which may be only the lower part of the band useful as open. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Luis. I fear that unfortunately, the debate and the discussions around the online safety bill have pretty much stopped every other discussion out there on the other topics. So it's taken all the air out of the room and everyone's focusing on this. There have been some arguments, and again, political arguments. So we here have politicians who have said, well, before trying to make the network safe for children, you should actually try and get all of the children in the UK to be able to access the network, which is what the broadband plan was supposed to be. And that unfortunately isn't the case. But, you know, the politics is such that they try and find convincing arguments to get more electors, not to actually get things done. Sorry, that's a personal, personal point of view. But obviously, you know, the, I think one of the questions that was asked during the UK IGF was, what are your plans regarding? And we had the Shadow Minister, that was Shadow Telecom Minister, that spoke. And the question was, what are your plans? What do you hope in the next 12 months for the UK internet? And the answer was, well, we hope to get in power, so to be elected. So that's the first step, I guess, for politicians, not quite the first step for technologists and policymakers. We're, I think that once the online safety bill is, well, we can't really say the debate will go away, the debate will continue. But there certainly needs to be a lot more discussion on the use of Wi-Fi 6, on the use of these bands in the UK to help with community networks and with bringing better connectivity to those places that don't have it. As I said, the debate is somewhere else at the moment. It's unfortunate.
Thank you, and let's hope it solves soon.
Thank you, and thank you again for the presentation. I believe that our colleagues from OMAC did not end up joining us, is that correct? Okay, so I'll just call the attention of the board then to the board report which they sent, and in particular to its last statement, which is responsive to our request for advice. Their response there was, with the current threats, the internet in mind, the OMAC would advise the Internet Society to expand its outreach and advocacy to a larger audience worldwide in order to get them involved in defending the internet for everyone. Organization members are still keen to receive insights on internet policy and regulations, and it will support them in making informed decisions for their organizations and to support the advancement of the internet. With this in mind, the OMAC would suggest to increase insights and knowledge sharing in a simple, concise, and shareable way to grow engagement and support. So are there comments on the OMAC thing? Barry?
This is Barry Leba. Yeah, it's unfortunate that they couldn't get on, because I had some, a couple of questions about that. So I don't know how sensible it is to raise those questions now, but.
In case there's discussion on the board, please do.
Okay. Well, what I wanted to ask was whether they had any specific angles for the first part of it. The expand outreach and advocacy in what areas, in what regard? Something more specific than that very general statement. And how they thought that we might do it. And the second part is how can we leverage the organization members to accomplish what they're asking in the second paragraph?
I think the proper thing for us to do then is just to take those questions back to them in email, so we'll do that. Mohammed?
Yes, Mohammed, for the record. Yes, adding to what Barry has asked, I would like to ask, what specific areas are they looking to, for the Internet Society to give them advice on?
Okay, Barry, can you take the token to craft that email, including Mohammed's portion?
I can, yes.
Thank you. Okay, I think that brings us to the close of today's session for the Internet Society meeting. Before we suspend, is there any other business? Okay, seeing none, we'll suspend the Internet Society meeting until tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM London time. We'll take a brief break, and then the Internet Society Foundation meeting will begin at 20 till the hour, 11:40 here in London. Thank you.